First item up is a discussion of the Dyess Triangle. Is that the mayor maybe?
Yeah, she's still in office.
Okay.
Sure. I mean, I can, I can speak on it.
Is this her topic then? Okay.
Yeah, I just.
If you want to start, or if you just want to wait a few minutes. I mean, we don't have a whole lot we're going to cover.
Yeah. You want me to speak on it a little bit?
Go ahead, if you want to go ahead and speak on it a little bit, we'll get the mayor to fill in.
Yeah, so, um, the, the, the triangle, we, we actually was, had the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board involved big time in the triangle, trying to make sure that we are doing it correctly. We were blessed to receive the grant that we got for a million dollars to, to, that should cover all the costs to create the, the vision that we have for the triangle. We recently had some prohibitions that we spoke of, and, and I think the mayor had given us a Q and A, or, or an opportunity to respond to some things that we thought were good or bad, as far as what we thought could be a part of it, and what wouldn't be a part of it. And I think pretty much all the council were on the same page with those prohibitions, prohibitions that we saw, that we were given as advisory from the Fairhope Advisory Board. Natural trails, you know, nothing commercial that we're going to do, everything is going to be naturally. From what they're telling us, the trails that we have should be created naturally. We don't have to cut dirt to do those. And a lot of that stuff, we're going to leave to the management company to, to create what we're looking for, the professionals, as far as the trails and bike trails that we're excited about. Hopefully, we'll have that tunnel. We talked about having a tunnel underneath, coming underneath there, and toning over, kiosk for information purposes and educational purposes. We have maybe an educational building for the classroom. And I think there's a possibility that we already have a building out there that was kind of donated to us by a family that's already on the property, so I don't know how much more building we'll have to do. And Hunter, you can jump in anytime as well, if you have any insight. But we're trying to keep it as natural as possible with the plants and the leaves, and, and all the species there for teaching purposes. Mayor, you can jump in. We were talking about the Dyess Triangle. I just went ahead and started, a little bit, talking about it.
Sorry, I had somebody long-winded on the phone.
No worries. No worries.
So, yes, the, I think I've sent you all a copy of, obviously, the deed restrictions, and what was proposed by the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. I think we've all had a chance to review those. We thought they were probably a little restrictive. Had some questions about them. I think Councilman Burrell, Councilman Martin, sent me some, some comments, some feedback. But what we really need to do is just determine how we want these worded, and hopefully move forward with the deed restrictions. So, that's what we, we want to discuss today, is what we like about them, what we don't like, what we want to change, and then propose something that we can move forward with single tax and get this done.
Yeah. They responded back. When I say "they," I'm speaking to the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. I think they rebutted the questions that you had, Mayor. As far as, and I know, Jack, we had some same questions as far as what's commercial, what's not commercial. Because I think that some of the deed restrictions prohibits anything commercial. And I don't know, but we were asking questions, Jay and Jimmy, questions like, if we wanted to have a wedding, what would that look like? But from what I understand, we already have ordinances that cover those things, as far as, that we have in the books already.
Right. The first restriction is any commercial or industrial use of the property. That you couldn't have, you could not do anything like that. And so, my question was, we said, "Okay, but define commercial." And they said that would be anything that would be related to a gathering, anything that requires fees or permits. So, if, say, we did do trails on that property, and the biking association came and wanted to do a biking association, I don't know, competition, or whatever, and we charged them, like, the rental facilities of the use agreement. Is that a commercial use? I mean, it is city use, but it is generating money. So, but they feel like that would be covered under other ordinances that we have.
Right.
And if we're okay with that, then we could move forward with that deed restriction.
I know that I've heard it said up here a lot, that, you know, keep it simple, but sometimes, simple leads to, you know, misinterpretation in the future, and I don't want to chance that. For instance, I think that, this is actually one of your comments, Corey, which is a great comment. I think I may have had one of, I didn't even see yours until now. I know that my, I had a similar one. That if we, if we do have something like a botanical gardens there, we might want to rent the space for a wedding. And, you know, does that prevent that? So, I think that we still need to have a little work on that language to spell out that, because I don't know anybody on the council, or you, Mayor, that are necessarily opposed to things like that.
No, and, and one thing that I've talked about, you know, there's the possibility, if we have creek access, do we do a kayak launch? You know, is that commercial?
Well, from what, when I saw the rebuttal, or the explanation that the president gave from the advisory board, I think what she was saying was that she just didn't want any commercial entity in control over the property. And I think we cover that whenever, with our public properties, we have ordinances that cover that. And I think, but we can reword it to where that's clear.
Well, we might even say, we might even say, no franchise agreements are ever allowed there.
Right, and that may be how we handle that. And then I think the other ones, the other thing was number two, the one about the placement or construction of any buildings other than restroom facilities. You know, we had talked about the possibility of maybe a learning center, or a nature center. There may be some kiosk, educational kiosks that we want to put in there. I have no idea, but what constitutes a building? So, I think we have to be real careful about being that restrictive.
And I think on item number three, it looks like, I don't know.
And they gave a definition. I, I think, if you look at, I read this earlier when she responded, and I was speaking, she is Amy Paulson, I think that's who we were talking to, as opposed to Gary.
They basically, in number three, want to make sure that all vegetation management will be performed as prescribed in the, in the forest management, forestry management plan, whatever that might be. And are, you know, is, it's operated, are, are done under the guidance of the city horticulturist. They just don't want people being able to go in there and cut down trees for no reason.
Yeah, and I think, you know, yeah, so the building, going back to number two, Mayor. A building, they're, they're speaking of a building as, as four walls and a roof, as for definition-wise. The kiosk, they're saying they agree with. But now, we were speaking of, isn't there already a facility there that we can all transform into a learning center?
The possibility of one that could be donated to the city, that we could use. But, you know, they go as far as saying, "We do not recommend that a nature, nature center facility is needed."
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
Because there's already other nature facilities around, but, I mean, that's really not their, that's really not their job to determine that. That would be up to the city council and the, you know, staff at that given point in time.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're not making things too restrictive, and that was, that's, that's the biggest thing. Because this is not easily undone, and that's why we're doing it.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question of the mayor. Would, if we have a learning center there, what's your vision? Let's say that we turn that house into a, a nature center, or a learning center, which wouldn't necessarily be a bad idea at all. My only concern is that we, we have a park there now, where we have a full-time employee, or multiple employees, which we didn't, we don't have now.
No, and I do believe that you would have to have an employee that is responsible for that piece of property, or more than one. But to me, the nature center would be, you know, we've talked about an outdoor classroom. It might be where you do, you put information on the species of, you know, reptiles that you find there, or snakes, or whatever it might be, and it's an area for, you put examples of that there, and kids walk through, and they, it's a learning center. And then they're able to go out to the outdoor classroom and look at different species of trees, and different things by walking through the parks and through the trails. So, I think it's just an educational hub, basically.
And, and I'm just going to be devil's advocate here. They make a good point, as far as, we already have the Pelican's Nest, and, and things that they can kind of tie in together. We don't want to put too many buildings on there, so should we limit the amount? So, the language should say a limit amount of buildings that we put on there? I mean, I don't mind a learning center, but in the future, because, you know, once we put this in, and we're gone, dead, what if they just come in and want to start building on it through this loophole? You know what I mean? So...
And, and I get that, but I think you have to be, again, the reason we're doing this is because it is so restrictive. I mean, once we do this deed, it would go from the city council to the single tax board, to a vote of the single tax leaseholders, if they don't like what's happening. So, I mean, it's pretty restrictive, so you just need to be careful about how you're wording things.
Yeah, I think we want to be somewhat restrictive, but, but leave enough flexibility for, in the future.
At least in the beginning, while we're developing the park? I mean, because, I mean, there's.
We still haven't finalized our plan for what that.
Right, for what that looks like.
So, we've got to allow flexibility in the, in the deed restrictions to cover anything that we think.
But the first thing you want to, I mean, and I'm not saying that we have to do the deed restrictions right now, but one of the first things we said we wanted to do was protect that green space. And so, this is our first attempt at doing that. And, and we don't have to be in a rush, but we definitely need to start considering how we want that park to look. We have reached out to Auburn to look at doing a forestry management plan, but that's still not the overall plan for both parcels of that, you know, park. So, you know, we're going to have to either engage with somebody, or ourselves come up with a vision of what we, you know, see that park evolving into, before we enter probably these deed restrictions.
I mean, you know, we had a presentation made by staff several years ago on the, on the Triangle property, and the north side was largely left alone. The, the home there wasn't in the picture at that time. Wasn't even, there wasn't discussion about that. There would talk about parking lot, and bathrooms, and things like that on the south side of Edmonds there, in the actual, I'll say, the triangular piece of property. But there was also some presentation made, you know, I've mentioned kind of loosely, I should say, botanical gardens, but there was a, you know, there was, there was a, an idea of having a, you know, an event space there. Maybe it was an open air space, but it was some event space. How do y'all feel about that? I was trying to find some common ground on that event space. If you recall, Sherri Lee made that presentation. It's been three, three, four years ago.
I remember Sherri Lee and Wayne, I think, jointly.
Right.
And, and, and there were a lot of ideas that were pitched at that time. I mean, it was sort of a, it was almost a shotgun approach, and it seemed like we were trying to be everything to everybody. And I think we needed to dial it back a little bit from where we were. Because they were also talking about moving old buildings out there, kind of like the bicentennial park. If y'all have ever been up to Stockton, and.
Yeah, no, I don't remember ever agreeing to any of that.
And a tea room, and all that, and a wedding chapel. You don't remember all of that?
I remember weddings, but I just kind of remember us, well, they may have presented it all. I kind of remembered us just being in, in somewhat agreement over open space, and, and a venue for outdoor events or weddings, and I say, keep saying weddings, but any kind of outdoor event.
So, so, I guess what I keep coming back to is, should we, should we start developing this plan as what we want to go ahead and put here, and then do the deed restrictions? Or should we do the deed restrictions, and then?
Yeah, as we're talking, as we're talking through this, I think we almost have to do them kind of at the same time. But the other thing is, and I think, Councilman Burrell, I've always said that piece of land that I thought may be a botanical garden, or something there. But, you know, the more I think about it, just protecting that ecosystem, I mean, you, I don't know that you would want something like that there. I mean, I think an open-air pavilion would be great, because I can see Boy Scouts having their Eagle Scout ceremonies there, or something like that. But I don't know that you want, you know, people just, I don't know. I think that you have to just determine what you want that park to be. But I don't know that now I envision a botanical garden. I think you just want, really want to protect, you know, the trails and what you have there.
Trails and that, that, I mean, I guess the north park has the potential to be longleaf pine.
Right.
Savannah.
Right, and I think there's a lot of people who like the nature trails, and just like the feel of being, you know, in the middle of nature, without something constructed, like a botanical garden, or whatever. I do think a pavilion would be nice, because if somebody's in there, and we have one of these pop-up thunderstorms that come up in the summer, you need some, a place for people to seek shelter. And like I said, Eagle Scout ceremonies, that kind of stuff. But I think you have to be really careful about protecting the ecosystem of that park, and not, you know, doing too much damage with buildings and a lot of events, and catering trucks, and tent trucks, and everything else running through there.
Yeah, I think we should kind of get with the park ecosystem and recreation management, whoever makes that plan, and try to marry these two things together. Because it's hard to, you know, until we see exactly where right we want to go, you know, we don't want to cut out the vision, you know, so I think we have to kind of butt these two, or marry them together as we go along, to see if it fits the restrictions, or not, you know.
Well, and part of the Gomasa grant is going to be, allow us, you know, to hire probably a landscape architect, because the aesthetics of this is going to be really important to me. I just don't want somebody going in there. You know, is that area that we've talked about, for the, really, the whole time I've known about the park, the area we've talked about for the trailhead, is that the best spot? Or should it be somewhere else? You know, are we being narrow-minded by just thinking, "Oh, this is where we've always seen the entrance to the park"? But does it have to be there? You know, can it be somewhere else? So, you know, there's, there's, to me, there's, we need somebody with an outside vision to come in, and give us some options on, on what we, what we should do.
Well, and I appreciate everyone working on getting this thing, trying to move it forward, but I, I do think we need to move the project or the concept forward. What is timeframe on that Gomasa? Is there a timeframe that you have to?
We're just now getting that information together, so I think, you know, it'll happen pretty quickly, but I would say easily after the first of the year. But again, we have reached out to Auburn to get them to give us, you know, an idea of how we could work, maybe with them, just for the forestry management plan, to identify the tree species and some of that kind of stuff. Working with, you know, community volunteers also. So, I think that meeting is next week. So, maybe we'll, we can just put this off until we get a little bit more information, and then we can bring it back. I just don't want anybody to think that this part of preserving the triangle is not important to all of us, because it is. But I think we have to be careful about how restrictive we are on ourselves, as we're developing that, that, you know, that park.
Right, and I know there was, I know Councilman Burrell had comments about, I believe, about, you know, when you're cutting in roads, if you're, if you're doing the bike trails, you know, you don't want to put language in. Some of that language looked like it would almost run counter to that.
Right. Some of, right, some of, we know, we, I mean, you have to have utilities, but we know we don't want to put cell towers up there and that kind of stuff. That was obvious. But yes, you're right, cutting in some of the roads to the trails and different things, you just don't want to be so restrictive that you prevent yourself from doing anything there.
Right. Okay, so you think maybe go back, put this on hold?
We'll, we'll go back, we'll put it on hold, but I would still ask you all to look over these deed restrictions. Give us your comments, see what you think. If you're, if you're with a, you know, on a bike and ped committee, or something like that, ask their feedback. So, when we come back, we have a lot of good information that we can gather and move forward.
You know, I know that, that they definitely don't want anything constructed. When I say "they," I'm just talking about the environmentalists, people. They don't want any movement of dirt. They want, their, their belief, which, they're smarter than me, is that those trails are naturally already there, from the way the, the topography is laid, that we don't have to move dirt. So, I'm hoping that's the case. Try to keep it as natural as possible.
Right.
Yeah, I'd be in agreement with that.
Yeah.
I don't think you want to intentionally, you know, come in with a, a big bulldozer and move dirt, but you're going to probably disturb some dirt when you come in with a bobcat, or whatever. You do have to come in with.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, utilities, they understand the utilities part, where they mean the trails, and trying to create trails, and.
You know, we talked about even lighting. You know, there were like no lighting throughout the park, but there may be the need for some security lighting.
Well, I don't know. I kind of agree with the no lighting.
Like the dirty cameras.
Yeah, I, I agree with the no lighting, because you don't want people in there all times of the night, you know. It keeps it natural. People know when to go home, you know. I think the parking lot area, but as far as through the woods, I don't know.
Yeah.
I think it should be closed at dark.
Yeah, and I would love to say that it's closed at dark too, but we have other places that are closed at dark that continue to get vandalized. So, I mean, that's something that we have to, you know, we just have to consider.
Well, whatever, you know, the police department needs to do to ensure safety, I think is critical. But, you know, I, I definitely think it should be closed at dusk, or.
Yeah, there's no reason for people to be.
We don't need people wandering around in there.
Yeah, I think if you have a parking lot, good point about where that's supposed to be. We, we're talking about a tunnel near the proposed roundabout, and maybe that's not the best place for it. But if, wherever that is, I mean, we just, you know, whether we put up a chain, or whatever, we put up to not, not let people in the parking lot at night.
And maybe it's motion-censored lights that we use, so if they know somebody's, well, I guess you wouldn't be able to do that either with wildlife. You would have, the light would be on all the time anyway. It would be crazy. But yeah, that's, those are all things that we need to think about. And hopefully with, you know, somebody else coming in, who's, again, smarter than, than all of us, they'll be able to give us some guidance on that.
I would, I would also suggest that, that the council starts maybe making a list of things, not a hundred things, but three or four things that you think are important to be included. And do it independently, and turn it into a clerk.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Very good idea. All right, council, that, that would be, that would be good, if y'all can work on that. Next item up is committee updates. Councilman Burrell?
We had a rec board meeting last week, and one of the things mentioned was, just to put on the visionary list, a recreation center, an addition to the existing recreation center. We had some discussion around that. And then more discussion about, I should have brought the minutes, but where we're, you know, where we're at, where we're at on certain projects, like the, the ball fields. And we talked about a lot of things that were budgeted this year. Corey can, Corey was there, he can piggyback on, on some of this discussion. But the main thing that I got out of it was just this, you know, this, this vision of what we have. And I was very, you know, upfront in the caution that, you know, we have a lot of these wants and desires, and we have 18 committees that all need, we have needs. And so, you know, while we do need to, we do need to put that on the visionary list, but I don't, I don't know when we'll get to that. That's all I have.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I, I think to be particular, I think Pat brought up a facility that was needed, which is needed, as far as our recreation is concerned, as far as our boys and girls, for gym facilities, as far as wrestling and basketball. We're definitely running out of space with the kids. We've got more families moving in. We're using, you know, last year, we got in a little, with the schools, trying to use their gyms, and it just, it gets to be a little bit of a cluster at times, trying to get the kids' practices, and at decent times, and fairly. So, but, you know, just to piggyback, I think that this is the opportune time, and I spoke this. We're going through our comprehensive plan. In our comprehensive plan, this is a vision 20, 30 years out, and you have sub-plans under those comprehensive plans. Comprehensive plan is usually your policy, and after that, you have these other sub-plans. And I think facility, facilities are a part of that as well, that you add to the comprehensive plan. And I think if we start talking about what facilities are needed, and start adding them to the comprehensive plan while we're doing this million-dollar comprehensive plan, I think it's the opportune time to do it. And it puts our ducks in a row.
All right.
And that's it. That's all the committee.
And I know we're working on a short, short-term time, so we've only had a week in between meetings, so not a whole lot's happened. Councilman Robinson?
None.
Councilman Bean? And I've got nothing as an update. So, I guess we go ahead and slide into department head updates, and if you would, if you've got an update, also go ahead and cover your agenda items. We can fill that in. So, Kim, do you have anything?
Nothing.
All right. Anyone else got anything? Yep, yeah, if you've got something on the agenda, come on up.
Yeah, what's, what's going on on Church Street?
They're filling in the hole today.
What's going on down there? I just, I saw a couple of pieces of equipment down there today.
The gas department was working down there.
I saw you out there, up there.
It's like, same thing has been going on.
A mess.
You want the whole soap opera?
On the agenda, I have item number, number 16, an F-350 extended cab duly truck that we're looking to purchase. And then jointly with Paige, at the museum, 14 is the, the doors for the fire truck bay, which I realize they're extremely expensive, but those.
I saw that. I was going to ask you about that. I mean.
Those are extremely heavy-duty doors, and apparently, I'm not exactly sure who built the ones last time, but they, the entire frame is literally pulling in from being, trying, pulling away from the walls, trying to support the weight of the doors. So, we went out and tried to competitively get three quotes on this project, and no other door companies in the area were willing to even touch them.
And I want to make sure it looks nice, because I think that's a focal point of town. But is that something, have we looked at possibly trying to fabricate that in-house at all? Or is that just not even an option?
It's really not an option.
Okay.
And we're also trying to match the historic doors from the original fire department. And throwing that into the mix is, I mean, it's, it's something that needs to be outsourced to a company that does this professionally. Other than that, we got the, had the lighting of the trees last week. I think it went off pretty well.
I think y'all did a great job on that.
And we also have the Christmas parade that is next, next week, no, not next week.
Yeah, next week.
Next week, next Friday.
A week from Friday.
A week from Friday, yeah.
Is that December 3rd?
Yes, that's correct. Anyways, other than that, unless y'all have any questions for me, that's all I got.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir, fire away.
The, the pickup truck, item 16, is over budget by almost $13,000.
That is correct.
Can you explain why we went over budget by $13,000?
So, when we originally budgeted for a pickup truck, we had budgeted for a 250 pickup truck. And we have found out that the 250 pickup truck suspension underneath them does, just a, instead of a duly, just a single axle, not a single axle, but a single-tire rear end cannot support the weight of the barricade trailers. And we need to replace a vehicle that has the capability of pulling that, so we have to bump up to a duly 350. And what we've done is, is I had budgeted for two F-150s in our department. And so now, I'm only going to ask, not yet, but I'm going to put it in the, in front of y'all, to only get one of the F-150s, and then take the other F-150, and take the, the remaining cost, and put that towards the duly, so we have a truck with more weight.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it. Any other questions, George, on item 14 or 16?
Nope.
Everybody comfortable with the $28,000 on the swinging doors?
Well, I mean, comfort is not the right word. As you say, are you testing us, Jimmy?
It is, yeah.
I mean, no.
Well, the question is. With a hammer and some, I mean, it's got to look.
It's got to look.
That's what I'm, that's the question. Does it have to be historic doors?
Where it's located on the museum.
Yeah, I think it does.
So, that's just the doors, no structural, because I heard you say.
That's the framework.
The framing.
And the doors all together.
That is the structural as well. That's what I'm asking. So, that's everything.
But on a history museum, we probably needed to look.
Historical?
Fair enough.
Maybe.
Okay, maybe. Who said that? History is in this, not that show, but anyway.
The building itself is history also.
Yeah, I want to ask a question. We got, we, we asked for three quotes, and we only received one. Do the other two companies typically give us quotes? Are those local companies that we typically receive quotes from?
Yes, Bradner and Holland, and Ladsco in Mobile. Both companies are probably the two biggest door companies in this area.
And they wouldn't quote it.
Neither one of them, when they came over and saw the project, wanted anything to do with it.
And there was, we don't have another list to go back to, to try to get another bid, I mean, another quote?
I can't find anybody who's willing to work on it. The, the.
It looks like y'all actually had budgeted twenty eight thousand when you.
I did quite a bit of research on this.
So it's not that far off.
I mean, I searched all the way up into Illinois for these things.
Chairman, I have a question. So, so the, the reason that they don't want to touch it is because of the structural work that you have to do and not just put the doors in?
Between the structural work of just being able to support the weight of those doors and then tying that back into the existing building, there's a lot involved in that.
So there's a lot of code stuff that, that's going on. The structure, is it weight bearing is what I'm saying?
Weight bearing, yes.
That's what I'm saying. So, okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm assuming, I gotta question. I'm assuming there's a guarantee with this for.
There will be.
Three years from now, it starts separating again. We gotta.
There will be a warranty on it. I don't know what the warranty is off the top of my head, but there, it will be a warranty on these doors for sure. Like a product and labor warranty, yeah.
Are these the original doors or have we done this work in the past? Okay.
They're, the doors that are there now were built whenever the city remodeled to make at the museum. And they were originally modeled to mimic the original doors on the original firehouse for the city of Barret. And if you go look at them, you'll see what I'm talking about and how they, I mean, they're thick and they're heavy and big.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, George.
All right, thank you, George. Appreciate it.
I guess too, George, on that, on those doors too, I'm assuming that they know how often they're used. Because that's one thing I'm wondering if when we originally built that building, I don't know that they knew that we were gonna open and close those doors as much as we did.
Yeah, and then that is, a lot of the problem is the how much. But then when they're open, there's no way of, there's nothing was, to support them when they're open. So the weight of those doors was constantly pulling on the frame, which was pulling away from the building.
Will that be fixed, obviously, in the new design?
Yes, that's part of, that's part of the design when we're going back is to be able to not only support the weight when it's out. But also we're, we're, we're making them to where they're easier to close, to, to, to function more frequently.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Who's next, anybody?
Good evening. How are you doing today, Pat?
I don't have anything on the agenda. We may all be thankful for that. But I did have a couple of things to mention. The progress on the playground at the Rotary Youth Park, they're about ninety five percent complete. There was some parts that came in damaged that they have to order to bring in. And there was some components with the, the border that goes around it before we can put the mulch in. We can blame the supply chain for that because it's on back order. So we're probably two to three weeks out from completing that project, but I just wanted to give you an update on that. Also, I've mentioned this before, but we are having a Christmas movie night in the football stadium on Sunday, the, December the fifth. And we're gonna start that event off with a parade around the track of the field. And I, I wanted to make sure the council knew that you are invited to participate in that parade. After the parade, we're gonna have a lot of interactive games going on. We've invited all the high school sports teams to be represented. As well as all the recreational youth sports teams to be represented. They'll be doing interactive games with kids with prizes. And then we will show the movie Frozen shortly after dark. So I wanted to make sure you all knew that you were invited to attend.
And the, the movies are gonna be shown on the Jumbotron?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. How are you doing this evening, Paige?
I'm good. How about y'all? I'll add to to number fourteen. Like Mayor said, we do open and close those doors every single day when the, when the Hoganville is in there. It's one of the biggest attractions at the museum. And I wanted to say that they are gonna add like a hydraulic element that's gonna take the weight off of the building and make it easier to open and close. So that's partly the cost on that twenty eight thousand dollar price tag.
Any update on just events around town?
Yes, we'll have the Christmas parade, like you said, on December the third, a week from Friday. After that, we do, we roll into, after Santa makes his arrival in Fairhope at the Christmas parade, we have Santa Saturdays, the first two Saturdays in December at the Fairhope Museum of History. So we'll be having that downtown, ten thirty to twelve. And then we'll have New Year's Eve and that's partly the reason I am up here. I've got number seven on the agenda tonight, which is a resolution for J and M displays. Who, if y'all remember, we contracted out a turnkey show for our Fourth of July celebration at the pier, which they did a phenomenal job. And so we have got them on the agenda tonight for the New Year's Eve celebration, which is coming in at about ten thousand dollars for those fireworks on December thirty first. Which I'll probably be coming to y'all relatively soon about the Fourth of July, just so we can go ahead and get that contract started. Like I have mentioned before, cost of everything is skyrocketing. So the cost of our once show last year, which I can't, I think we budgeted about thirty two thousand dollars for, is looking around forty thousand dollars for the same show. If we want to go with that option, obviously we can stick with our, our budgeted amount and, and shoot off less fireworks or kind of bring down the show a little bit. But if we are expecting the same show, the price tag is gonna go up. So just a heads up on that. But, but yeah, so tonight's just the New Year's Eve show, which is again, I think it actually came in five hundred dollars under budget. So if y'all have got any questions for that.
Appreciate the heads up on the fourth.
Yeah, so anyways, thank y'all.
You'll be thinking about that. Thank you. All right. How are you doing this evening?
Good. Hello, council. Haven't given a golf update in a while, so I'll take a few minutes. Jeff Williams has left the city and is no longer the superintendent at Quell Creek. But we're in the process of accepting applications. We have several we're working on. And so we'll be announcing a new replacement for Jeff over the next few weeks. So we'd like to commend Jeff Williams on a great job at Quell Creek and his budget numbers were excellent. If you look at the end of the year report, he stayed well within his budget, did a great job of golf courses, showing some great reviews. Councilman Burrell played not too long ago in our city tournament, so some of the improvements were great under Jeff. And I just want to thank him for his time and service with the city. He'll be missed, but as I said, we're looking for new applications and some qualified people. So we have some people in, that have turned in their, their applications and we'll be interviewing those shortly. I want to thank George Lad has been out to the golf course to help me start planning for the cart path repairs, which are greatly needed. We're gonna get the grinder out there and start grinding stumps or roots out of the cart path and pave those, or get those out of the way. So that the paving companies that will get the bid on the project will be a little bit ahead of the game, save us some money. So I appreciate George. The grant that was given for the replacement of the walkway or in the cart path between two and three is almost complete. Of course, we don't have much to do with that project, but it is proceeding nicely. It has a great look to it and it's greatly needed. The concrete path is in. They still have a few more weeks of work, but also it's, it's, it looks a lot better than it used to before. So that should be completed shortly. I'd like to thank Mayor Sullivan, Ty Northrup, Jeremy Little, Travis Cunningham, Paige Crawford. And Jessica Walker, who did an outstanding job on the beverage cart. But during the employee golf outing, we had a lot of fun. I think we built some good morale for the city and the employees. And I just want to say a thank you to the people that helped us with Dade Paper, Robert Stell Coca-Cola and Fairhope Snack Company gave many prizes for the event. So it was well done. Any questions about the golf course?
Heard y'all had a great time. Sorry I couldn't be there.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. What you got going on?
Ladies and gentlemen.
We may be here a while.
Bless you. Happy to have Thursday behind us. Like everybody's saying, the lights are on, downtown looks beautiful. It didn't go off without a hitch, but what would you expect? But they're on, so I'm happy about that. Everything looks good except for Church Street. It looks rough. All right, so, and also Thursday, glad it's behind us because we picked that day to close everything in and get Valanda back on. So everything is back to normal. We got to our last switch and of course it would not operate. So we've got a, got an issue with that. It's not affecting anything. I actually like it the way it's switched around. But we are gonna have to work on that switch at some point. Council agenda items, I got number eleven, which I'd send a lengthy, lengthy for me email to all you guys, so you should have a heads up on that. I'm sure there'll be someone from White Grove or all of White Grove here tonight, who knows? And then I've got number thirteen, which is the transformers we need to order for the reserves. It's, they're fifty weeks out delivery, so.
All right, on number eleven, would you just mind kind of hitting the highlights on that real quick?
Yes, so we used to serve that subdivision with electricity, lost that, the territorial lawsuit to Ballin EMC. When we had it, we put our lights in, we installed our lights that were not actually installed correctly. I think they're on breakers or behind meters, which is not the correct way of feeding those. And no one's paying for the usage on these lights, I do not believe, unless the homeowner is. And I'm not sure on that, so I can't tell you. But because we don't own it and it's in their territory, but it's in our jurisdiction, we need to serve light to the, the subdivision. And to do this properly, I've been talking with EMC and they've sent us a proposal on what they recommend, installing new lights and feeding them out of their pedestal and transformers the correct way. And this way they can, they'll own and maintain those lights for us. We just will be paying the usage. I want to say it's six something a month, which equals about eighteen hundred dollars a year, I think, in usage for that. That's after we pay for the lights and the, the poles.
So we're paying Ballin EMC to use the, the power down there?
We, we do that everywhere that we don't have power.
And then?
Yeah. We pay the usage.
Subdivision pays for, did you tell, did you say nobody does for this one? Got you.
And they might be now because of the way it was wired back in the day, but I'm not sure how that is wired. I know it is not correctly wired, which will make it, you know, with them going in there and installing their lights, they have a two hundred foot minimum for their lighting. So they have a, a standard. That's why it equals, I think, I think we got sixteen lights in there and it'll be twenty two when it's done to have adequate lighting to their standards.
And item number thirteen, you, you just need, need to have some of this in inventory, but you got about a fifty, you said a fifty week lead time?
Yeah, there's long lead times on transformers. We know the reserves come and we do have a transformer that can go here. But once we lose that off the yard, we will not have another one, so we need to order, go ahead and order the replacement for that one. Or if it gets here in time, we'll use that, that one. Either way, they're the same transformer. But because the lead times are so long and we know what we're needing at this site, we need to go ahead and get those here.
All right. Councilmen, do y'all have any questions for Jeremy on items eleven or thirteen?
Is that actually a one mega bolt amp? Is that right?
No, it's a hundred KVA.
Yeah, because it says a thousand K.
Yeah, it's a thousand KVA transformer.
Thousand K, a million, right?
One, yeah. That's a mega bolt amp. Yeah, thousand KVA transformer and then six fifty KVAs. That thousand's a three phase pump out for the main building going at the reserve. Yes, it's pricey too. And don't be sticker shocked, this is, as long as it takes us to get here and get these to use, probably gonna be more by the time. I tell them, hey, let's get it. And they're gonna say, hey, well, the price is going up. Hopefully it's within the percentage. I don't know why I said all that, but.
Talking about on number thirteen or?
Yeah, on the transformers.
Jeremy, unbeknownst to you, I want to talk to you and I want to get with AMEA, through my position on AMEA. And, and, and talk more about how we can use our buying power to maybe move a little further up the list and get these things a little sooner, things like that. I got some, I got a couple of things I'm working on with that.
Yeah, and we actually talked about storage, ordering stuff, so we can ship it out to our own members and have it in stock and stuff like that.
I'm actually talking to some of the manufacturers of the equipment.
Oh, that's nice. Yeah, that'd be good. Look forward to that. All right, you guys good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chief, how are you doing this evening?
Good afternoon. I've got item fifteen, just to see if y'all have any questions about purchasing the five solar powered speed signs. And currently what we'll do is we'll use these in conjunction with the two portable speed trailers that we currently have. This would just allow us to move them around town a little bit better. They're portable as well.
Was that being bought with grant money or American Rescue Plan? I, I know that we were able to purchase something for the police department with some of those grant money.
We purchased the, the, the last speed trailer.
It was, it was, so it was, okay.
Correct.
All right.
Council, y'all have any questions for chief?
All right.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just a couple of quick updates before we go into the agenda items. We had issues over the weekend in the Fruit and Nut area on Pier Street, Pier Street. And we're still working on it. The water's back on and hopefully it'll be on to stay this time, but it's aging pipe. It's not, it's in bad shape. So every time we put a clamp, we use two different types of clamps. We had to get this, the last set out of Pensacola. The guys should be wrapping it up right now. And hopefully it's gonna hold this time. But that's just some more areas that we're gonna have to replace. We've talked about it. It's, it's not even metal pipe, so it's, it's got some age on it. It's cement. And that's all I'll say about that. But anyway, that's where we're at, okay? And the guys were, like I say, they came in at eight, eight o'clock Saturday night. I came out at two Sunday morning. And they were there at almost dinner, lunchtime Sunday, get the people back in water. You know, they get a huge attaboy and I hope if y'all see our guys out, because this is day in and day out. You know, we talk about, you know, they, over on Fairhope Falls, contractor broke us and we had to fix that. And so it just seems like it's every day. We've had a main break and people out of water and most people are not understanding. So, you know, they don't tell our guys, hey, you got the water on quick. So sometimes you, I don't, you know, and I've been doing this my whole life, so I do hope that you all understand. Even see them out, not only our department, when you see them out, give them an attaboy because, you know, they're, like I've always said since I've been here, they're here because they want to be. They love Fairhope. They're not here to get rich, y'all know that. I mean, none of us are. We're here, just like you, we're here because we want to be, so.
Well, it seems like we can't get to that infrastructure fast enough because I'm sure this is not the last issue you're gonna have in the Fruit and Nut before we can get to making replacements.
I have two items on the agenda. Number eight is the approval of the engineering for the sewer force main from Bishop there at Fairhope East up to the new Publix.
Does anybody have any questions for Jason on, on this item?
Where did you say it was exactly? Did you say Bishop?
Bishop Road off of Fairhope Avenue.
Yep.
To, it'll, it'll stop at Publix.
Publix is, Publix is scheduled to open, I think, in February.
And we keep saying Publix, but just so we're clear, it doesn't just serve Publix. There's that lift station that's at Publix will actually, there's five other areas or four other areas that filter through that. So this force main will serve all that development out, one eighty one and one oh four area.
But it starts at Bishop, you're saying?
Yes, sir. That's where this previous, that, they were doing from Engelside to Bishop. That's where it stops at that lift station. And this project picks it up from there and goes nowhere, like she said. And it takes, I think actually seven lift stations will pump to this. This would be what we call a regional station. That Publix is actually putting in, we're just upsizing. We're just upsizing it. And then that one station will pick up everything in the north end and pump to the lift station there at Bishop that we're calling Fairhope East. And then from that station, it picks it up, pumps it directly to the wastewater plant. Currently, it's not doing that, you know, it's going through other stations, but when we're, when we're finished with this project, then that's, that's this.
I don't know why, on this one in particular, this, this one seems more, maybe just in my mind, it's doing more. It seems more of a value than some of the others, you know?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, sir. We good?
Yeah. Any other items you've got on?
Oh, number 17 is a truck, and this truck is 2,281 dollars and 70 cents over budget for the budgeted, the budgeted, if you, budgeted line item of $48,000, and this truck is over the 2,281.
Okay. And you were always intending to get a 3,500?
In this case, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Jason on the truck purchase?
But it's Kim, and she's helps. She's great. She helps, and we keep a close eye. And this may not even be appropriate to say, but at the end of the day, when you look at our vehicle and equipment, when we're, this is our last truck, when you look, you know, we're well under budget for that. And it, you know, it may not mean anything, but it's hard to line item like we did, you know, with that 70,000 for that truck, and we ended up being able to secure us a cheaper vehicle, and it went from 70 to the same price. It's identical to this truck, so.
Okay.
We, we win a few and we lose a few sometimes, you know, we, we budgeted this, and then the vehicle market went to where it's at, and it's hard to...
Hard to keep up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No other questions? Jason?
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Jay.
All right, who's up next? Travis, you got anything? Is, let's see, you got an agenda item, right? Let's see.
Yeah, employee, employee.
Yeah, number 18.
26.
Okay, so number 18, that's Travis. And...
Number five?
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll have one more. Number, number five, is that Travis or Mayor or both?
I can speak to it if you want me to. I don't think, Travis has seen, just has seen it.
Okay.
That's the longevity pay that we talked about during the budget process versus the one-time pay increase that we typically do in December for the employees. This will take place of that, and this is basically based on years of service, anywhere from zero to four years, five to 14 years, and 15 plus. And there's a value attached to different years of service for retention and...
Okay. All right. And is it, is it 250, 500, 1,000?
It's 250, 500, and 1,000.
Okay.
And that was included in the budget.
All right. So, any questions about that while we're...
Is that for full-time employees only, is that's going to replace the, the one-time pay increase at Christmas?
That's correct. And there is nothing for part-time employees, something we kind of struggled with.
Yeah, I kind of was noticing that, but I just assumed you might propose that for part-time employees at that time?
We talked about it today, you know, but, and we talked about it as a staff, and if we're really using it for retention and for rewarding those employees based on years of service, I mean, part-time, it's kind of hard to do. So, we opted not to include that in the budget this year. Certainly, that's something the council will consider if you, if you wanted to.
Do you have a, either you or Travis have a number of how many part-time employees we have? Do you know off the top of your head?
Um, I don't know that I have that.
Right, but non-seasonal, I guess.
Non-seasonal, right. It would just be part-time. I could, um, let's see what time it is. Nope. I was going to say, I may can go get that number. I do not have it.
Okay, if you don't mind, maybe if in between break, I think we're having a little time. Just be curious. Hunter, do you have anything today, or any update in general?
No agenda. And this is related to our board of adjustment. I know we, I've talked to a couple of you through the years of, last couple of years about variances and how those have potentially been abused, and when to give a variance and when not to. And I think our current board is doing a great job of, of looking at those, especially looking at case law and what the, the purposes of a hardship, for example, and applying that appropriately. Something came up at this last meeting, and the applicant, not related to setbacks or anything like that, but we do have some criteria in our zoning ordinance about height limits, building, accessory buildings can't be taller than principal structure, for example. And an applicant came, did not want to make changes to a historic house, but wanted to just change, it was two feet above the house, and asked for that variance. So, there's not, technically, not a hardship for that. You can't create a hardship by building, so it's about the land. They provided evidence of many of those being done throughout the years, but I think they also, because we've been really looking at what a hardship is, had some objections to approving that. So, they asked us to look and see if there was any options. Probably January, we will propose just to have the conversation about adding a, an option for a variance, very limited in its approach and not dealing with setbacks, but when we have a very specific issues, we got to think the trick is not to, somebody come in and ask for a variance to the height overall. So, it's for 30 foot, and we want 45. That's not the intent. But when there are these very limited issues, is there a procedure there that we can create that would make it legal and, and have that, the board of adjustment do those things? And I think whether it's palatable or not will be whether we can put a bow around that and limit that authority so it doesn't get out of hand. But I just wanted you to know that's coming to Planning Commission probably in January, and then we'll, if it makes its way through Planning Commission, will ultimately be a decision the council will have to make. So, if you have any questions on that, I can send the draft when ready. That'll be closer toward the end of December, and just send everybody a copy and see if there's any early thoughts before we get through Planning Commission.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Eric?
I just want to let you, I have item number 10, which is change order to the scanning service that we had for all of our historic plats and plans. You know, they, they called us back. If, if anybody had ever seen the tube wall in our office, it was probably about the length of that backing up there and about eight feet tall, and it had a ton of paperwork in it. So, and I know Lisa had things done, and, and planning had things done. So, came down and, and in order to complete the work, they're, they're saying we need to issue a change order. This is, I have money in my budget for professional services for this year, so it will not have to be an unbudgeted cost, and I'll make the rest of my budget work around it if y'all are kind enough to allow it. Of course, Murphy's Law, we've needed three sets of plans for recent projects, and they're in the unscanned pile. So, I would like to go on ahead and get them scanned, and so we have them, and everybody can have access to the plans.
All right. Any, any questions for Eric on this?
Yeah, what was the original contract value?
I think it was around $36,000.
So, this is 10, 10 in addition to?
It is.
They were 46.
It is.
35, 861, something like that.
Yeah, I will just let you know, it was a tremendous amount of construction drawings. It was a huge amount. So, you know, I, I can't speak to the validity of their request for the amount of the change order. I just know it was a lot of, it was a lot of stuff to do. And right now, the only other option I have is to drive Tallahassee and get all those bags full of plans and drive them back.
I mean, did they look at the scope of work and agree to a price, and then it was, they just miscalculated?
They agreed to an estimate, and as any good contractor has, they had a good lawyer that had a nice disclaimer in there, so it, you know, it just kind of is what we're stuck with. It's unfortunate, and like I said, I have money in my professional services budget, so I will hold off and, and try to make sure I work around it this year. I, I don't know that I've ever come to you for a change order before, so hopefully, this will be the one and only time.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Jeff, I think you got, maybe item number 12?
Yes, I've got item number 12, yearly renewal of support services. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I guess it's just, is the cost in, in line with what it typically is, or?
Yeah, it went up a little bit, because I had budgeted, I think, let me look at the sheet. I had budgeted 45, and it's about $88 over budget, so it went up a little bit, but everything's in line. Most probably.
Any questions for Jeff on that?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. I've just got a couple of other items that I didn't have marked, Mayor. Number, number nine and number eight, I mean, number nine and number 19, are those both yours that come up? Okay.
Number nine, number nine is just to authorize the contract for the, the city employees' holiday luncheon. I think y'all did the indemnity, y'all, the indemnity clause at the last couple of meetings, and so this is just a contract for that. And then the number 19 is the resolution to execute the contract with Thomas Hospital that y'all do every year for use of facilities, I think for Spring Fever Chase and for, if they were to have an event, if it's in a possible.
Do we know if they're bringing that back this year?
I have not heard, but I'm assuming because they called and asked about it that they, they plan to.
Okay. All right.
We actually waived their cleaning fees as well. I mean, that's kind of a hard cost, as far as, I mean, we give them the facilities, and it says in parentheses, rental and cleaning fees. Did they not pay for cleanup?
I would have to go back and look at previous years. I haven't, I'm not sure.
I would think whatever's been standard would be, be okay, if we've been doing it that way for years.
So, I'd make it right.
Well, I don't know. I mean...
I mean, we got, we're incurring labor costs, and I mean, you know, there's one thing, if you've got an empty room, what does it cost? But if you've got labor costs...
I don't know that they asked for that, Councilman Burrell. That's what, I would have to go back and look to see what their request was. I think this was just copied from previous years, how we've worded it. I don't know that they asked for those cleaning fees.
I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not convinced that always precedence a reason to continue one or something. We find things that we do all the time.
I think that's...
I'm not saying, I'm not saying in a way or another, I'm just...